Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're gonna have our invocation by Pastor Tom Allen of Harvest Baptist Tabernacle in Jonesboro, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would, please stand with him.
Can we pray together? Our heavenly Father, God, we thank you for the opportunity, Lord, to wake up this morning and breathe your air, God, to serve the King of Kings. God, we want to thank you for America, Lord, a land given to us to worship God. Thank you for the freedom, Lord, to men and women that have given their lives, Lord, through the centuries, Lord, to give us this freedom tonight. Thank you, Lord, for our leadership in this county. God, we thank you for Clayton County, the men and ladies who serve here. And, God, we ask for your divine wisdom, Lord, that you might direct them. Lord, you said, "If any man lacks wisdom, let him ask of God." And, God, we need wisdom in America, Lord. We need wisdom in our homes, in our churches, Lord, in our state house. God, I pray for your divine wisdom, Lord, upon these men and ladies, God, as they lead this county. And, God, I pray, Lord, that you divinely move in their hearts as they seek you. And, God, we just want to thank you for, mighty God, who's been good to us today. Thank you, Lord, for your good mercies upon our land. And, God, we just ask, Lord, that you shine on America again. Lord, we need you, Lord, more than you need us. We greatly need you. So, Lord, we ask for your divine providence upon America. Bless this nation and these people, God. And we'll thank you for it's in the name of Jesus, not a weak Jesus, not a defeated Jesus, but a mighty conquering Savior and a soon coming King. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Good evening and welcome to the November 6, 2018 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes, give me just a second, Madam Clerk. Okay, the first item I would like to remove from the agenda is the discussion item for Tyler Technologies System overhaul update. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? And the only thing I would say about the reason for the removal of this is because we are still having discussions amongst department heads, and there's some things that needs to be worked out, and that's just coming to light. So, I think we have a firm handle on what needs to be discussed, so we can do that outside of a meeting. Those in favor, aye. Opposed, yes, your names. Second item I would like to have removed is item 13, the appointment to the Development Authority, Redevelopment Authority Board and Urban Redevelopment Agency, replacing the, or to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Ricky Clark. I did not know that he had resigned, neither have I heard or received anything from him. So, why, or who put this on the agenda? And could explain to me the purpose?
I put it on the agenda.
And what's the reasoning? If he didn't step down? I'm trying to figure out how that came about, if his term is not up until March of 2019.
If you're a member of the Development Authority, you're supposed to own property, a property owner, property taxpayer, or a taxpayer, and he is not.
So, you said he, the statute states property tax?
I'm not sure.
Or does it say taxpayer?
Is it a statute? Is it a statute?
Because the one I read just says taxpayer. So, whose definition or interpretation said it's gotta be a taxpayer?
You guys want to talk about that during the agenda adoption, or when it gets to that item on the agenda?
No, I have a motion to remove it, so I'm just trying to get some clarification.
Well, he's not a property tax owner, sir.
So, that determination on Mr. Hancock? Mr. Hancock?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hancock.
You haven't had opportunity to read the statute?
I have, sir.
And it says taxpayer?
It does, sir.
And your interpretation, or is it Commissioner Hambrick's interpretation, that it naturally means property tax?
No, sir, I don't think it necessarily means property tax. I think it means ad valorem tax. I think it does not mean sales tax or income tax, which are the other two types of taxes. And although there is absolutely no case law on this point, I've conferred with county attorneys and with bond counsel who deal with development authorities about this issue when the issue was raised, and they share, in my opinion, that it, that that requirement is a requirement that the person be a taxpayer in the county in which they're serving, and the only type of tax that you can pay within the county to the county is an ad valorem tax, whether it be real or personal property.
So, when you talk about being a taxpayer, you're talking about having, for the purpose of sitting on the board? That they basically have a vested interest in Clayton County? Is that what you're getting at?
That is what the statute says, is that they be a taxpayer and resident. Those are the two requirements of, within the county.
So, we know that Ricky Clark is a resident of the county. He does not own his home.
Who's to clarify that, Chair?
Hold on a second. They have tax digest. So, with that being said, he is a business owner in Clayton County and pays occupational tax. He has skin in the game in terms of paying tax directly to Clayton County.
We ask the Tax Commissioner, at the request of the Commissioner, whether or not each member of the Development Authority qualified as being taxpayers and residents. Tax Commissioner wasn't, was not aware of the residents of all the members, but he did respond with an email that indicated that all of the residents, with the exception, all the members, excuse me, with the exception of Mr. Clark, were taxpayers, but that he had no record of Mr. Clark being a taxpayer in Clayton County.
Okay, but you just agreed that it doesn't specifically state property tax?
No, sir.
And if he's paying into the county coffers by paying occupational tax, why would that not qualify him?
There's no law that says that it would or would not. It is requirement of a taxpayer, that he be a taxpayer. Is he paying in as a business? Does he have a business?
That's correct.
Well, then the business is paying the tax. He's not personally a taxpayer. I mean, again, if he owned a corporation, if he owned a corporation, the corporation pays the tax.
So, any business that operates in Clayton County is the business that has the interest and not the people?
Oh, the business is the taxpayer if it is a separate entity. It is a legally distinct entity from the individual.
I don't know if I agree with that. I hear what you're saying, though, but at the end of the day, for us, for us to have this on the, on the agenda and not, have not allowed him or anybody else to share their point of view in terms of why they are qualified or should be qualified on this board, I think is a little disingenuous, because he should be able to come here and articulate, you know, this is what I have, this is what's going on. And then we decide at that point, just don't put a board appointment on the agenda and say we're gonna fill it, without giving somebody the due process. And I think that that's, that's not the proper way to do business.
And furthermore, Chair, I just, if I can make a statement, I don't think it was an issue when we first put him on that board until they removed Mr. Edmison as being the Chair of that board. And furthermore, it goes to what I've been saying all along. I don't believe that any sitting Commissioner, or even the one that's leaving, should be on that board, or anybody directly related to a municipality as a voting authority. So, now we got another conflict of interest, because now it looks like a personal vendetta. Because even though it's one Commissioner that's bringing it forth, why didn't we do our due diligence when we put these people on the board to make sure that we were following the statutes when we put them on the board? That's the problem I have with it. So, it looks vindictive, in my opinion, and it could come back and bite us. So, we have to be consistent in what we're doing regardless of where the recommendation comes from.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner?
As a point of fact, I was not removed as the Chair of that board. There is an annual slate of officers. I stepped down and supported the slate that did not include me, and that includes Ricky Clark. I think he adds value to that board, and I think his relationship with this board is also of value to the Development Authority. It's interesting about this state statute, that states, same state statute that you continue to argue has a conflict of interest explicitly provides for a member of the municipal jurisdiction to appoint one of their own, explicitly says that, and you've received written emails that I've been CC'd on from both the Development Authority Legal Counsel and the county's legal counsel. So, talking about vindictiveness and emotions, I apologize for my part in this, but I wish you'd hold yourself in.
That's a good wish, but as an elected official, my concern is still the fact that it was not an issue back when we appointed these people to the board. So, either we did not do our due diligence to make sure that we were in compliance, or it's that it didn't matter at that time, and now that we have a sitting board member on this board who is no longer serving as the Chair of that board, and now it coming before the board, it is not a good perception. And not only that, I've already made the suggestion to several others that I believe that every municipality should be represented on the board, but just not as part of the executive body and voting body. They should operate in an ex officio fashion, because we have to make sure that all of the municipalities are represented fairly, and they know that they're gonna be represented fairly. And that's my stance on it.
I totally agree with you. In fact, the value that Ricky has, Mr. Clark, has added to the Development Authority, regardless of his eligibility to serve on that, on that board, I think could very well be served, and the county can be served if he did work in some capacity in an ex officio. I think that's a great idea, and I think I'll take that to the board next week and ask them for that. Thank you.
Okay, well, we're gonna move on, but the last thing I'm gonna say is, Commissioner, I was at that meeting, and you didn't step down. You actually got a nomination to continue to be the Chair, as well as Ricky Clark, and he just received more votes than you did to be the Chairperson. So, it wasn't the fact that you stepped down. I think you're being a little disingenuous about that as well. All right, those in favor, aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, who made the second?
Commissioner Warner.
Thank you.
And the motion is to remove the item.
Yes, sir.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It fails.
Are there any further amendments?
We need to remove this. Yes, I would like, make a motion to remove the transit X as a consent item agenda to the regular agenda.
Is there a second on it?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, this is four to one.
I also make a motion to remove altogether the amended contract with Tyler Technologies until we can finish those discussions and get things on track. I don't think we need to make any amendments to any contracts dealing with Tyler Technologies, especially based upon the conversations that I myself have particularly had with others as along with Chair. So, we need to hold that item until the next meeting.
Motion's to hold, is there a second?
We already voted on that.
On which one?
You have to remove it.
Did you leave the discussion item?
No, I took off.
Number nine.
Oh, I thought you were talking about this one.
That is one.
Okay, she's talking about the RFP 15-61.
Ms. Bean, 15-61.
Off the consent agenda. Not the discussion item.
Those are two separate items. Thank you, sir.
All right, there's a motion to hold it. I'll, second motion for the sake of having a discussion. Mr. Brookings? Mr. Brookings, if we hold this item, what kind of impact would that do or have on the project?
So, this specific item allows the City of Riverdale to use the police records management system as a normal user. That's all this is. There's no cost to the county. Riverdale's paying their own licensing fees. It's just a formal agreement that we have to make.
So, everybody else is already included in the system? This is just adding Riverdale to it?
Riverdale's the first to ask, but...
The first to ask?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, how would that impact if this is placed on hold and does not move forward?
To the next meeting, that's all I'm asking.
We, it could wait till the next meeting.
Is there any reason for it to wait till the next meeting?
It's just the will of the board.
It's what?
It's just your, your will. I mean, it's your, however you want to do it.
I'm ready to go.
So, you're saying there's no, there's no financial impact to this board or anything? Is Riverdale paying for it all?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, if I may make a statement. I asked some time ago, and it's on the record, whether or not we had involved all end users dealing with this overhaul, Tyler Technologies overhaul. And it's on the record that it was stated that, yes, we've included everybody. And I am going to say, without a shadow of a doubt, that even though I was working this week, I received several phone calls from several elected officials stating that they made recommendations and their recommendations were not taken into consideration. And not only that, that this project is not going well as it's been stated. So, this is why I've asked for it. This is what we've got to stop doing as a board. We keep pouring and pouring money in, and this is the taxpayers' dollar. We get on a train and we let the train wreck, and we've got to stop at some point. And we're not saying that we can't bring in Riverdale, but what I am saying is, what has been sold to me by several depart, by your department, as well as others, and I've had this conversation today, has been quite different from what I've received from several of the departments. So, until we get it right, we just need to stop. We need to stop everything, come back together, and make sure that we're all on the right page. And furthermore, for the board can understand, I've spoken to other jurisdictions. I've also pulled up, and I don't want to bring it up, case after case after case, where other jurisdictions have had these same issues and unfortunately ended up in litigation. So, if it's the will of the board to continue to move forward, understanding those facts after we've asked to hold it, then that's fine. But I tell you what, it needs to go on the regular agenda so that I can make my vote. I'm only one vote.
Okay, well, your motion is to hold and...
Just to the next meeting. That was my original motion, but if it dies, we'll move it.
Well, let me ask a question. What are you hoping to accomplish by the next meeting?
I'm hoping that, Mr. Chair, that you and the departments and Mr. COO, as well as Mr. Jakes and Brookings, can come to some clarity and get us on the right track when it comes to this project and get down to the bottom of things. I really didn't want to bring this up here, but I don't understand why we chose this company considering the several lawsuits with the same issues that we are having in this county. You can't keep covering stuff up. You gotta fix it at some point. You gotta stop and fix it. That's all I have to say. It's the will of the board, as you stated.
All right, any other comments? All right, those in favor of holding, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three, two, a passes.
I just want to make a statement. It's on record who wants it to go forward.
Madam Clerk?
Are there any further amendments?
Anything else? Any other amendments?
Hearing none, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to adopt the...
Is there a second?
I mean, yes.
A second?
Those in favor, aye. Opposed, yes, your names.
The board will now hear a presentation on MARTA's quarterly update, as presented by MARTA's General Manager...
I asked to move it to the other general...
And CEO, Mr. Jeffrey Parker.
Good evening, Chairman Turner and members of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for inviting me back. I have a relatively short presentation, and then I will open it up to questions. Trying to get my, not sure who's controlling the overview. While, while we're waiting for that to come up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move forward. I will be talking about the state of service in, here in Clayton County, we have several projects that I want to give you an update on, and as well as, as I said, open it up to questions and answers. So, the first item that I want to bring you up to speed on is the commitment that MARTA made to the county when they joined, when Clayton County joined the MARTA District around high-capacity transit initiatives. To date, we've done significant work, including determining what the purpose and need of the projects were, developing an evaluation criteria of what high-capacity transit should be, evaluated several different technologies, looked at seven different corridors, and had a series of ongoing public outreach. We identified seven corridors, and I'll bring that map up in a moment just to remind you of those corridors. We've identified which corridors best fit high capacity with ridership. We reached out with public, the public, an ongoing initiative with the Citizens Advisory Group stakeholders, and also a technical advisory committee, and connected significant data on these seven corridors. We took that, combined public outreach, the surveying that we did online to make sure that we had a broad cross-section of the county, as well as combining that with technical data, and that led us to two locally preferred alternatives. And the two locally preferred alternatives that we've identified is, A, being the commuter rail corridor along the corridor owned by Norfolk Southern, which will connect into the MARTA heavy rail line, providing connectivity nodes at South Lake Mall, Mount Zion, as well as Clayton State University. The corridor has a lot of high commercial development, and it's forecasted to have significant growth up to 2040. And the second corridor that we've identified is the busiest bus route in Clayton County, one of our busier bus routes, along State Route 85, connects important nodes such as South Lake Mall, the Southern Regional Medical Center, College, and as well as College Park Station. And we've identified this as a key to improving access to both jobs and educational institutions. All right. Apologize for this. I'm gonna... I do have a computer science degree from...
You might just have the wheel to work.
So, this is the map of the seven corridors that we examined, combining of the, both the public outreach, the surveying of citizens, as well as the technical data. These are the two locally preferred alternatives that we've identified that I just spoke about, and our next step. So, we, we are going to go to the MARTA Board this month with the locally preferred alternatives. We will continue community outreach and begin to conduct the environmental analysis of these corridors, key coordination with Norfolk Southern as the owner of the facility for the commuter rail corridor, and we have to work with the county to develop a Bus Rapid Transit implementation strategy. Clearly, we need to make sure that the expectations of what Bus Rapid Transit are met by the commission as well as the citizens. So, really, that's, that's the key initiative around high-capacity transit. Another focus of, of the agency is to bring an operations and maintenance facility to the county. We are undergoing and continuing the slight, the site selection process and developing a report. Then we will ultimately, once we've identified the site, design the requirements for the facility, conduct an environmental review, and ultimately acquire the real estate. So, we are focusing in North Fulton. We want to consider both the, the physical site, access to major highways. Clearly, this facility will provide access for a bus, and we want to minimize deadheading time.
Okay, Mr. Parker?
Yes.
A minute ago, you said you're focusing on North Fulton. You mean, North Clayton County, right?
I apologize.
All right.
North Clayton. And really, it's, it's to make sure that we, you know, physically put the bus depot in order to minimize access, because this is what I was thinking of. The buses will both serve Clayton County, but some of the bus routes will also access the southern parts of Fulton County, just to minimize the operating cost overall to MARTA. The next steps, in the fall, we will have finalized the report. We will come back to this commission, as well as the MARTA Board, in early 2019 to give you a briefing on the site and make sure that we have consensus, that that site makes sense, and then continue on with an environmental analysis, conduct a design, and ultimately acquire the real estate. Another key initiative that we've undertaken, and I think the board received an update from one of the board members a couple weeks ago, we have, we are working to award a contract, an advertising contract here in Clayton County for benches. We will be taking this contract to the November 29, Planning and Environment Special Relations Contract. This will be a 10-year contract, which will really leverage the income of advertising revenue so that we can increase the number of bus benches that we have throughout the county, and I think this is a great opportunity to work with the county and just bring more amenities to the bus riders here in the county. I think it was at the last time I was in front of you, there was a question about numbers of employees. We do have 554 employees, the largest group of those employees that live here in Clayton County, are within our bus operations group, which is also the largest group within, within MARTA, rail operations, as well as 14 other departments. But more importantly, we want to expand that, that base of employees, and we are planning on having a job fair in Clayton County, December 7, really to broaden our access to the citizens of Clayton County, to make sure that we're reaching people in Clayton County who simply see MARTA as a great opportunity for employment. So, we look forward to that job fair that will be coming up. And we also will be, will be working on just improving the connections with, with the community, making sure that, that, that our staff is articulating the variety of job opportunities that we have across the agency, and look, look forward to that. We did something like this very successfully last month in Fulton County, and we want to continue to do this, and I think it's something that we just need to do reoccurring probably more than once a year. So, I think this is a great opportunity. We probably, probably on average hire, you know, 200 to 300 bus drivers, for example. Obviously, that's the largest position that we have, so we have a tremendous hiring need, and, you know, any opportunity that we can reach out to our jurisdictions to help fill vacancies is important for us. And that concludes my presentation. The one thing that I do want to mention is just give a brief update on the 15th Amendment. We will be reaching out to the commission in November and, and December with the hopes of making sure that the current version of the, of the amendment, that you've seen it, that you have, we've answered your questions. I know that one of the issues was around, previously was around benches and the advertising contract, and I think we've made tremendous strides on that with the contract that we're about to reward, award, and just make sure that we're, we're meeting the needs of this jurisdiction in terms of getting a 15th Amendment executed.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. Parker?
I have a question.
Stems?
Mr. Parker, I'm gonna muck up the dates and times of this, but, Mr. Griffin, help me out. There was a written response from MARTA to the county some months ago about different questions about the feasibility of the commuter rail and things of that nature. Do you remember when that was? Was that spring, or was that early summer? Yes, sir, the spreadsheet. Anyways, part of that identified, or MARTA explained that the environmental analysis or environmental impact of that Norfolk Southern right-of-way corridor, in order to satisfy both the state and the federal matching grant obligations, could be done with an abridged or abbreviated environmental impact study, and that that study had already been started, and that it would be about 18 months to completion. So, is that true, or did I hear you say that you're not gonna start the study until after all these other things are done?
You know, it's, it's underway, and, and we've done data collection, and that was part... You know, it's underway, and we've done data collection, and that was part of the analysis that went on, but really...
So the study is undergoing right now?
Yeah, from a data collection perspective, you know, obviously, we needed to have a locally-preferred alternative until we get into the meat of that environmental access. We weren't gonna advance, you know, for example, an environmental process in all seven of those corridors that we were looking at. But, like I said, the data that was collected in this evaluation phase feeds right into that environmental process, and we are on schedule to meet that plan of the 18 months to complete the environmental phase.
So, when would the 18 months?
Largely because we're trying to stay within the right-of-way, so as long as we make, you know, we're able to advance this project, and we'll have to coordinate and negotiate with Norfolk Southern as the property owner, and, you know, the only potential risks here are if the right-of-way just isn't wide enough for the service in any particular spots that gets us to go outside of their railroad corridor.
So, when is the 18 months approximately gonna be complete? So when will that environmental analysis be done?
You know, my understanding, it was this, you know, this beginning of this fiscal year, so, you know, the 12 months would be June of 19, and then finish it by the end of, end of 19 is my recollection of that. But let me send a correspondence from Ben Lemmer, our planning director, and make sure I get that right. I wouldn't want to misspeak those deadlines and set some expectations.
So, and I appreciate that, Mr. Parker, appreciate that. I spoke with Norfolk Southern yesterday, and they indicated they hadn't had any communications whatsoever with MARTA since the last meeting I had put together last fall on that corridor. But at that meeting, Norfolk Southern explicitly said, after they talked about all of the engineering reports they had given MARTA, that had been commissioned by MARTA, that there would be substantial amounts of right-of-way to be acquired out of their excess right-of-way. You just indicated that you're still trying to squeeze it all in. They already told us, from a study that was commissioned two years ago, that lots more needs to be done. So, could you speak to that? And also, and I don't understand, I've never done this before, but why would we be waiting to negotiate the price with them? We want it, they know we want it, they want to give it to us, it's a negotiated transaction. The economy's improving. Why wouldn't we be doing that in order to expedite this process?
Yeah, good question. You know, we want to expedite the process, but we also want to be eligible for federal funding. One of the keys to this project will be to access the FDA's capital improvement program and get a full funding grant agreement. So, the FDA would require that we don't move forward on any land acquisition until we have gone through a sufficient level of environmental study to make sure that we've identified any sort of impacts. So we will be advancing conversations with Norfolk Southern. We'll be making sure that we've identified all of the environmental impacts, identified mitigations that we will need to implement, along with any sort of, you know, acquisitions outside, as you had suggested, acquisitions outside of the right-of-way, and then we will be applying for a full funding grant and making sure that we can be eligible for this project to get federal dollars.
So if you guys are taking the time to see how much you can squeeze into the right-of-way acquired by Norfolk Southern, or from Norfolk Southern, we know since Norfolk Southern told us that there's not enough to do that, have you all started looking at what needs to be acquired and where those pinch points are outside of this acquisition? And if so, if not, then why not?
That's what we'll be beginning now, once we've completed and identified this as the locally-preferred alternative.
So sometime next year, you'll get started on something that we knew two years ago?
I wouldn't characterize it that way, but we will. The FDA is not going to participate in a project and make it eligible for federal dollars if you're beginning to access and into agreements that, you know, deal with right-of-way and haven't identified all of the environmental impacts, whether they're historical nature, environmental nature, noise impacts and all that. And so we want to, we have to follow the federal process, and that's the path that we're on.
There you go.
Any other questions?
Well, I have a comment slash concern.
Okay.
You mentioned the facility, maintenance facility, being in North Clayton, but serving Clayton and Fulton. I would like to make sure that it is in Clayton County and not Fulton County.
I definitely misspoke. Yes. There's a clear commitment. We're only looking at property in Clayton County. We're not looking at any property in Fulton County, but we do want to run as efficient of a bus operation as we can, so some of those bus routes that will operate out of that facility will clearly serve Clayton County, but will also serve parts of South Fulton County as well.
Just want to make sure it's in Clayton County.
I definitely misspoke, and I apologize.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? Do you happen to know off the top of your head about how many jobs that you are anticipating to bring to the potential site?
Let me get back to you on that. You know, I don't know, you know, here's what will drive that, is the size of the site and the number of bus routes physically, how many buses we can store there overnight and maintain in that facility. Would drive how many routes that we would be running out of that, but I think we could give you a range of jobs that we would be looking to move here into the county.
And I don't want to make any assumptions, but there will be some, I guess, mechanical jobs that would be offered there as well?
Yes. Yeah, so just...
Make nets.
So, a bus depot would really be comprised of not just bus operators, but bus mechanics maintaining the buses, as well as hostlers, which are the employees that overnight are fueling the buses, whether it's CNG or diesel, as well as servicing, cleaning the buses, removing money from the fare boxes, and all those activities that get the bus ready to go and service the next day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
The next presentation is the 2018 compensation study. The introduction will be made by Ms. Pamela Ambles, Human Resources Director, and presented by Dr. Donald Long with Management Advisory Group.
Good evening, everybody. Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Human Resources, we are very excited about the 2018 compensation study, and we're even more excited about the possibility it has for our employees. And without further ado, I would like to introduce Dr. Donald Long from MAC. Dr. Long will facilitate the presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate your kind invitation to come before you tonight and talk about this study. I'd like to also thank employees and supervisors and managers and department heads for participating in this, and the hard work of the HR staff as well. They've all done great. I'll give you some overview of this process and answer any questions if you like. I do not have a degree in computer science, so I'm working on this. Okay. Isn't it supposed to... All right. Very good. This type of study is done traditionally every three, four to six years by state and local agencies all across the country. Our company has had the pleasure of conducting over 500 such studies in 40 states, so we're happy to be here. This study has to do with making sure that employees are in the right job classification. We want to recognize their job duties and responsibilities, so we want to make sure their job title is proper. We want to make sure that you have accurate and up-to-date job or class descriptions to make sure that their duties are reflected in those documents. Those are official documents. We want to make sure that employees are paid at a fair rate of pay. Again, this is all about fairness and equity, and we want to make sure that all employees, not only are your job classes properly leveled with appropriate minimum levels of pay, and as well, maximums assigned to each of those job titles. We want to make sure that employees are paid at a fair rate of pay as well. I want to make sure that you know that this study is not about looking at staffing levels within the departments, or layoffs, or eliminating or adding positions, or we don't look at the actual performance of the employee. We look at their job duties and responsibilities. We're not looking at work hours, volume of work, or solving any staffing issues that might be at play. There are some major steps in a study like this. I'll just go through them real quickly. We conducted some employee orientation or information sessions at the beginning of the project. Many, many people attended. We talked to them about completing what we call job analysis questionnaires, where they actually then went online through our website and completed job questionnaires to help us understand the nature of their work and their job duties. So they responded to many questions in the questionnaire, and they did great, substantial and considerable and excellent participation. Supervisors reviewed the questionnaires and made any appropriate comments and provided feedback. We talked with department heads and conducted interviews to clarify any issues they might be having in reference to recruitment or retention. We conducted a market survey of other agencies to compare the kind of positions that exist here within the county. So we looked at the market as well, and have provided some draft tables and a report. Just as an overall brief, how the study flows, I mentioned the questionnaires, the job analysis. We looked at the market, looked at market data, collected substantial information there. We're updating the class descriptions. We're proposing a variety of tables and recommendations for the county, and we're going to be looking at different cost options, implementation approaches, to make sure that it's affordable and implementable. In terms of job evaluation, when we look at any job, there are a variety of factors that are reviewed, and these are those. We look at judgment and complexity and responsibility for assets, what are the impact of errors from the work that's being done, what kind of equipment is used, physical demands, communications, math, use of math, what kind of hazards a person might be exposed to regardless of the precautions that they might take, responsibility for the safety of others, and we also look at the education and experience that's required for any position within the county, and those will be documented in the job class descriptions that we're providing to you. So, all these factors, this whole system ties together, from the questionnaires that people completed to the job evaluation. All of these factors were evaluated in the assignment of every position to a level within the compensation structure. This is probably a 15-minute slide, but the point, I'm not gonna go there. The point I'd like to make is we used a software that we, as a tool, that helps us do this kind of project, and we are going to license that to the county and HR for ongoing use to maintain the system going forward. When we looked at the market, we looked at certain benchmark positions across all of these different kinds of functional areas, whether it's the clerical positions or paraprofessional IT, supervisory, managerial, and so forth. All these different types of positions were what we call benchmark when we looked at the market out there. And that market was originally defined and identified as these various counties in the area and employers that are competing with you for employees, qualified, highly-qualified employees. So we captured data and information from all of these various employers. In terms of the overall market comparison, this is just overall, looking at how you relate to the market, minimums, midpoints, and the maximums, the pay ranges that are currently in place. You're behind. So, not every position is 17 or 18 percent behind, but as an overall average, we found that you're behind and there need to be adjustments made. In terms of implementation, the first step typically is to make sure that employees are at least at the minimum of the new pay grade. So, if there is a $35,000 to $45,000 job, if the person's at $33,000, there's an adjustment of $2,000 annualized to bring that person up at least to the minimum. That's normally a standard and best practice's first step in terms of implementation. In addition, if there's money available, we are able to run different scenarios that would provide what we call equity adjustments to recognize time in the position that a person has. So if the person's been in a position for, you know, 10 years, they would get credit, and the software that I referred to does calculations that enable us to do those cost implementation scenarios for you, and those are being looked at right now. But those are the two different steps, and that would be standard and best practice. In terms of next steps, we are going to be making recommendations for each job classification in terms of their Fair Labor Standards Act designation, so that would be part of it. We're looking at the benefits, how you relate to the market in terms of the benefits that are offered. We're finalizing the, what we call, class descriptions or job descriptions, and then we're going to install what's called CM, it's Classification Manager Software, and train HR staff in its use for ongoing use and managing the system. So, thank you.
All right. Are there any questions for Dr. Long?
I do. I have one particular question. I did look at the information, because the original information that was sent over to us was not as detailed as I would have liked for it to be, so once I received the actual detailed information and reviewed it, I noticed that there was a compression issue. Can you speak to the director's pay versus the regular employees? Because you mentioned that not all positions were totally under, you know, what the market, what others in the market are offering. Can you speak to that? If you can, can you address it?
In terms of how the director's salaries...
Because you didn't break that out, because you just gave us the percentage. Go back to the other slide that gave the percentages, please, of the high, mid, minimum, mid, and that slide.
Okay.
If you all could put it on the screen as well, because I can't see that far away.
Get that bump light this side.
It will, it's slow, okay. So, the point is, you have the percentages there, but you don't break it down in terms of the directors. And the reason I'm saying that is because as a board, we set policy, and it seems that we're constantly bumping up director's pay. And so, there is a, what I saw, and what I've reviewed in your report, is there's a serious compression issue there. Well, we've got directors getting paid at a certain level where they're competitive with everyone else, but then we've got others that are getting paid little to nothing that really can't even, you're talking about the benefits, can't even afford the benefits, because what is the lowest person being paid in the county? What is the lowest pay in the county? The lowest salary? And then the highest salary? You don't have to tell who, but tell who, what is the lowest salary?
I can answer that, Commissioner, for the lowest.
Take the poll in, please.
If I'm not mistaken, the lowest salary in the county is around $21,000, and that's an approximate, and the highest salaried person within the county is around 138 approximately.
Okay, and at $21,000, how far below the poverty level is that? And we're talking about full-time, right?
Full-time, yes, ma'am, and I can't answer that question. I'm not sure what the percentage below the poverty rate that is.
Okay. One of the things I am gonna make a statement for, you can get me, Chairman, because I'm gonna say it, because since it was brought up about the economic development and all of that stuff, the challenge I have is, in this county, to get our medium income up, we gotta start hiring people in those director roles in this county, and I stand by that. So that's why I wanted to see what is the percentage of those that are directors that are competitive in pay versus others. If you could come back with that, I would love to see that. I didn't see that percentage breakout in your data.
Okay, I'm not sure what you saw, but certainly we can address that.
Okay, thank you. Do you understand what I'm asking? Because these are percentages overall, but I want to know the medium, minimum, average, and maximum of our directors, and even the ones underneath them, versus everybody else, because I want to address the compression. because I want to address the compression issue.
Okay, and we can have a conversation offline, Commissioner, and you can tell us exactly what it is that you want?
I don't know no better to state it. Um, Chairman, maybe Chairman can work with y'all on that.
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I.
Ms. Amos.
Yes, how, how long will you all maintain the system?
How long will?
Right, I thought you mentioned something about maintaining.
Well, typically, uh, counties and municipalities will go outside for an outside review every, you know, three to six years, but a system, if it's properly drawn and maintained, uh, should be good for three to five years.
Okay.
Until you make, you know, adjustments, and you might want to, often agencies will look at, uh, the structure itself, not necessarily how each position might be more responsible this year rather than last year, uh, in terms of their internal relationships, but, uh, you might want to look at adjusting this overall structure, uh, a minor amount, so when you come back and do a study in three, six years, you don't have a big jump to make.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, how often will we have to do a study like this?
Commissioner.
It varies.
Part, part of it though will be, uh, we'll annually look at, because the software will be internal to HR.
Mm-hmm.
When we do the actual reviews, we'll look at those positions annually as we plug the information in to see whether or not we're still within the market of those respective positions. But what he's referring to is doing the study, every, probably anywhere between every three to five years.
Okay. Now, th- this is not for you to, I guess this is more for us. When are we, uh, talking about implementing?
Mm-hmm.
Um, this process?
Yes, ma'am, so the goal is to finish the presentation today and provide you all those positions that are in question for you to consider at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Ms. Amos.
I just want to tie it all in with the money. So, this might be a little bit for you, and it might be a little bit for our Chief Operating Officer, but when this board approved its operating budget this fiscal year back in effective July first, we allocated a certain amount that we estimated would bring our compensation into parity, and, uh, can, Ms. Smith, can you speak to that a little bit? And, and, and maybe just before that, this million dollars or one point oh one nine million for Phase One, does that, that, that's a Phase One of Two, does this need a Phase Two, or it all needs to come together to make us competitive, or is that subjective? Trying to get a handle around what your results are and what we budgeted and whether or not we can afford it, and I, I want to afford it, but three point eight million dollars, that seems like an annual ongoing increase, which is an entire millage rate. Millage point.
I love it, need to be that.
Which one, you want me to, you want me to adjust that?
Whichever one, yeah.
Let me come up there, because I can't. Good evening, Commissioners. Um, so during the budget process, we kind of, we had two things in there. We talked about a COLA for everybody, and then we initially, we, uh, eventually settled on the three point seven five average merit increase. Um, out of that money that we budgeted for that, we had at that time estimated that we would have about four hundred thousand dollars left over that we could apply to whatever we, whatever came out of this, and however much we could take care of. However, after completing that, um, implementation of the merits, we actually have a little over eight hundred thousand dollars left over. Um, if I'm not correct, if I'm not mistaken, and Ms. Amos, you can correct me, and Dietrich, we have, uh, I think Phase One to implement everybody to get to the minimum is about one point one million dollars, in which we could absorb, however, because we have vacancies, that we probably would not reach that one point one million dollars, so we should be able to afford that during this current fiscal year, because that money is in the budget already.
So just from a timeline, so we had the COLA that was for everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Then we had the merit that's been spent by the department heads.
Right, no, we didn't have a COLA.
We didn't have a COLA this budget.
We had a COLA.
We didn't do a COLA this year, no.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the merit, we, we had the merit, that's been implemented.
Yes.
And now we have the compensation study, and we didn't budget money for the compensation study? I thought we did.
We did. We budgeted some of it, that the four hundred thousand dollars, which was the difference between what it costs to implement the merit at the three point seven five percent average, and then we had a, a pot of money, and then the remaining balance was the four hundred thousand dollars that we said that we would, um, use towards this, and then we would look at the budget at, at mid-year again, to see where we wanted, um, taxes.
Got you, so this Phase One is a million dollars increase on an ongoing reoccurring basis. We'd allocated about eight hundred, but it's not really a million because of lapses and vacancies and things like that.
Right.
So we're relatively close to what our projections were for.
That is correct.
Balanced budget standpoint going forward, until we get to Phase Two.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Which, Mr. Chair, I guess we need to talk about it, because it's, I don't know if we can discuss it in executive session, but I will make it publicly stated. This is the reason I recommend it, I didn't feel that, because there's such a compression issue, and what I mean by that, you've got directors getting paid one thing, and then everybody else that are working, and some of them are working below the poverty level. If we would have saved that money and not given that merit increase to directors who were already being compensated, according to the, according to what I've seen, possibly fairly, that's why I asked for you all to break that out, then that could have also given us enough money to bring those employees that are struggling to pay their bills and to pay their employee benefits, a little bit more money to get where they need to be. I just feel that we are in, out of balance, and we can get in balance if this board comes together and we're committed to doing so. And it's not saying that I don't think the director should be compensated, but what I'm saying is there's a huge discrepancy between what the employees are getting paid with this, uh, data versus the directors. That's all the point I'm making. So, that's the only thing I think that we need to figure out a way to make that work and implement this.
All right, are there any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Long, for your presentation.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
All right.
And the last presentation for this evening is the Transit X, as presented by Mike Stanley, CEO.
There'd be a correction on that, during the presentation will be J.T. Williams.
Yeah, yes, uh, Mike Stanley lives in Boston, and so, have a long trip here for the presentation, so they've asked me to do that instead. Uh, I would like to start off first by saying what you're not being requested to do, uh, and I'm glad that the consent resolution was removed, because that was not what we understand it to be. The, in fact, the MOU that's been re- submitted as a draft says that you're not obligated to do anything if you adopt it, except consider it further, that's all. At the bottom of Page One, it says Clayton is willing to provide further consideration to the merits of this proposal and will consider, consider authorizing Transit X to do certain things. It ends up in the last paragraph, this MOU is intended to spell out the general terms for future negotiations and will not be binding upon Clayton unless and until approved and authorized by the Clayton Board of County Commissioners. So, what you'd be requested to do, uh, would be to authorize the chairman to enter into the MOU after it's reviewed by the county attorney to be sure that what I just said is what the MOU says, that you're not obligated, it's not binding, but it does just say that you'll consider it further, and, and no, no binding until this board approves it in a subsequent time, only then. So, I wanted to clarify that before, uh, I made the presentation. Uh, yeah, a few vessels out. What's in it is, uh, passing to you now is the highlights of the proposal and a thirteen-page proposal. Uh, we want to have time, of course, to go through a thirteen-page proposal tonight, not, uh, asking you to do that, uh, but I wanted you to have a copy, and y'all can review that, uh, you know, later time, but I do want us to consider because of the timeframe allocated, just, just go over the highlights of the proposal. That's a one-page summary, everybody have that? They, uh, the, the, uh, uh, let me say that also, you may have seen that the ARC finished their annual survey of what's important to people in Metro Atlanta, and transportation is number one by far, crime number two, education number three. Uh, the, the, what they were, the, the, Doug Hooker, the executive director, uh, summarized it saying that there needs to be several alternatives to a transit, to really, that's the only way we can, can get to where we're trying to go and, and move people around, and this is one of those al- alter- alternatives that we're suggesting. And, uh, if you see that it's a little different, it's public transportation, but it's privately operated. The big thing that I put listed first, want to get your attention, it's totally privately financed, no public financing, period, no public financing. On the other hand, they're going to be paying you, uh, and you putting money in. I've been on the, uh, Greta Board here for sixteen years, and chairman for that sixteen years in, uh, Transportation Projects and Planning, uh, in Metro Atlanta. When I first started, sixteen years ago, I, I knew that transit operations of the capital improvement that you put into it was government financed, that was just normal. But what I didn't realize was that the annual cost of doing all these things had to be provided, about two-thirds of it or more had to be provided by government. That was a shock to me. Riders only pay a third or less, and whether that's buses, trains, whatever it is, uh, it is, uh, so it's a lot of cost to the public, to, to, uh, the government to have transit. This one is totally different, and that's one of the huge things that's different here, there's zero public financing, and on the other hand, Transit X is going to pay four percent of their total gross revenues to be prorated among the rights-of-way owners that they have to go through to, to have the, and it's only a ten-foot right-of-way that's needed for the pod, the pod, uh, but, uh, in fact, you just put that up there, that's what we're requesting to be done, suggested, uh, somebody said that's a Jetsons-type deal. I'm too old to remember Jetsons, but y'all are younger, you probably remember that. Uh, but it, it's nineteen feet above the ground, and, uh, goes forty-five miles an hour, and, uh, it's a, or there's a, a one post every seventy-five feet, uh, it's a, so it's kind of out of the way and, and moves quicker, it's safer, less cost to the rider, but there are ten different sources of revenue that Transit X has, uh, and, uh, I don't even know all those myself, uh, but Mike Stanley can tell you that there are ten of them, but that's why it's able to do it privately and make a profit, and it's the most transparent company I've ever known, uh, and I've known a lot of companies over my many years, uh, and, but you'll see in there the, on page thirteen, for twelve years, it's telling you what his estimated rev- gross revenues is, the five percent total be paid out, uh, to government, and then the, the debt service for ten years, then debt paid off, and what they'll lose the first three or four years, and then what they anticipate making a profit after that. Uh, so, very transparent, all of those, all of those thirteen pages are very detailed, it's for engineer types and other people to, but it's very, very transparent. You'll find that as you, as you look through there. The, uh, the other one percent, and, uh, this I'm sure would be, uh, important to all of you, one percent of those gross revenues goes to the governmental entity that contracts to do that, and so Clayton County, you know, you'd have the one percent regardless of the right-of-way. That's in addition to that four percent for right-of-way. So without any right-of-way, you get that one percent, and, uh, Transit X is solar-powered. One of my responsibilities as Chairman of, uh, Transportation Projects, Greta, is air quality. Well, it was pretty bad sixteen years ago, but thanks to Georgia Power primarily, it's come way down, we're now below the, the standards. Uh, but this is zero fumes or other air quality issues, very green. It operates twenty-four seven. It's cheaper than most other transit methods, reduces congestion, provides parking relief, reduces pollution, it's sa- improves safety, no risk to government, and this is something we want your county attorney to look, as these others, uh, I've presented this about ten different governments so far, all of their attorneys have agreed that they, with the performance bonds, so if anything goes wrong in there, you're not, it's not going to be government money doing it, it'll be insurance money. And, uh, then, uh, the last thing I want to do is, is, now the bottom, the numbers for Clayton County. Now, this is a real, a boilerplate summary of the page, the thirteen pages that you've got. You'll see that it's proposing to provide two hundred and twelve miles of podway and have thirteen hundred stops. And that mean, with that many stops throughout Clayton County, it'll reach ninety-five percent of the population with a five-minute walk to those stops. They want to invest in Clayton County one point three billion dollars, that's with a B, one point three billion dollars is what they would put into Clayton County developing, uh, the, that pod network. And then, the important thing to, to, to you is that payment to government, that total of five percent, uh, is thirty-eight million dollars average over the next twelve years, starting at thirteen million in year one, and going up to sixty-three million in year twelve and continuing to rise. And I know that y'all lost about nine million dollars of, uh, fuel tax, this substitutes that really good, uh, and provides some good income for your budget. Uh, that's pretty quick in there, but big summary, uh, I'm open to questions. Please, you have your good point.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Williams?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Abbott.
You, uh, you said thirteen hundred stops in Clayton County?
In Clayton County, that's correct. Well, it's five and a half thousand of these pods, just for Clayton County.
Oh, you count each.
Throughout countywide.
Okay, you count the pod.
That makes sense.
How many people in each pod?
Up to five, one to five, but that, that'd be up to you, it's your pod, and, uh, it's about fifty cents a mile, is what it costs a rider, but that's for the entire pod. If you have five people in there, it's ten cents a mile. That's dirt cheap compared to any other transit, uh, but, uh, you can, uh, you, now, you've got to have people that are not too big, because all those. Those five can't go over eight hundred miles, uh, eight hundred pounds, and so, what, what you do is get your little smartphone, and you dial in the pod, and which stop you, that it's showing to be. When you walk up to that post, it's got a kiosk on it, it recognizes you. If you've been there before, it's a photo, it's a facial ID, so it sees Chairman Turner coming in there, and they know that he's been to stop A, B, C, D in the past, so it, it, it pops that on the, uh, there, so he's going to one of those, he just pushes that, like, B, and gets in the pod, and it takes him to stop B. Or he can type in a new stop if he wants to go to a new one, and it'll take off, what it does is, it's sitting there waiting on him when you get there, too. When you get a stop, that pod, one of those five and a half thousand pods is there waiting, and it, it goes, the main track is like a train, it, it's the main rail, but then it has a little jut out there where the stop is, the rail goes out there, and the pod's there, so after you type it in, get in, and the weight is not eight hundred pounds or more of, of, of people, then, uh, it, it goes up and takes off at forty-five miles an hour till it gets to the stop that you're told it to go to.
Is, is this being used anywhere else in the United States?
Well, no, this is brand new, it was rolled out, though, last Monday, a week ago yesterday in Boston, and, uh, it's, uh, it's being built in the Philippines and in Ghana. Uh, one of the reasons it started in these foreign countries, they own everything, you know, the utilities, the roads, everything else, what, they, they don't have to worry about getting right-of-ways or anything else, it's just the government signs it and it's done, so it's a lot easier.
Is I saw something in Henry County.
Uh-huh.
They were talking about it. So now, w- will this go from Macon to Atlanta, or?
Well, eventually, uh, we want it to go, uh, from Houston County, which is Warren Robbins area.
Right.
Uh, and, and Macon, Mibb County's already signed up on a hundred percent. Uh, they, they, I haven't presented it to Houston County, but will, and then to come from there, uh, but the pilot, the initial pilot for the United States would be from Tanger and Locust Grove, going up to McDonough, into the hospital and medical facility, up to Stockbridge, through, uh, Clayton County at the northern end to the airport. That, that's where the. That, that's where the, the goal is to go from Tanger Mall to the airport. For the first, that, that's a pilot. That's a thirty-six mile pilot. And then come back and do the others.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that it's in other countries, is it the same company that's in other countries?
Is it what?
The same company? I'm sorry, this mic.
Yes, it's the same company.
TransitX is in other countries.
That's correct.
Okay. And where are you manufacturing these pods again?
Well, they're, right now, it, it's been manufactured in the Boston area, but it will be done in whichever area they're doing it.
How many?
In, in Clayton County is one place on a consideration. They want it to be done locally, want they're doing it in the Fort.
Gillum.
Gillum area. Is, is that in Forest Park or?
Forest Park.
Forest Park area. And they've requested that they consider that, and, and Mike Stanley, when he's here two weeks ago, he agreed to give that full consideration. But there'd be a lot of local employees in doing this. When you have five and a half thousand pods, they gotta be, every night, they gotta be cleaned, they've gotta be checked, make sure that no damage is done. But there are cameras everywhere, and those cameras, they know from your facial ID when you get in a pod, who banged up something inside, but, but that's gonna happen sometimes. Now, I said there's seventy-five, a post every seventy-five feet. They can go over a hundred and fifty feet, that's what it's designed for. But we know that somebody is gonna be banging into one of those posts and knocking it out. And it'd be pretty easy to knock it out, that one post, rather than, than banging it and that sort of thing, to just go out, come in, bring another one. But while it's done, the, the whole system is still operating. Cause it can operate at a hundred and fifty feet without any damage at all. That's one of those safety features they put into.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
I actually had another one.
Commissioner Grever.
Has the, I know this kinda initiated with Henry County Board of Commissioners, has the board approved this? Henry County Board of Commissioners, have they approved this project?
It was approved by the, they have been approved, but see, this does not require board approval actually because it's not binding on the county. But what they'll do is if, if ones that haven't had a, a public hearing on it, they will discuss it with the, the various members to make sure that the, cause the city manager or county manager can do it because there's no obligation on the city or the county. So in some cases they have it, but Henry County, all of their commissioners are a hundred percent in for it.
So you, so what you're asking us is like use of the right of way? That's what you're asking for?
No, no, forget everything in there. Not, not, but we will, if, if you become obligated, and it'll be three or four months before the operation agreement is presented to you. Then it'll be negotiated out to make sure it's, everything's okay. And then presented to you for approval. At that time, you'd be obligated to assist TransitX in acquiring, you know, just asking people to help with the right of ways. But now, but also during that three or four months, be sitting down, TransitX will be sitting down with whoever y'all designate to make sure the routes are exactly where you want them to be. And working with the engineering firms, Arcata here, they're all over the United States, but I met three hours with them the other day with Mike Stanley. And, and they'll sit down with you and, and say, this is where we're proposing to that twenty-two, two hundred and twelve miles go exactly. You know, block by block where it should go. And then, since TransitX is in Boston, they would want you to, to assist. You're not buying it, you're not spending any money, just contacting whoever it is if you can do it. But now they're also, know that, that there's gonna be, sometimes you can't do it. So they, they allocate ten percent of it to be purchased or, or an easement for the private property. If you have to not go on the, on the public street, if you can't get that, then you go on the private.
Did Henry County approve of the MOU?
Absolutely, hundred percent.
And it didn't obligate them to anything?
That's correct. College Park, Hayville, Bibb County, wow, about ten altogether.
All right, are there any other questions?
Well, this may be something.
Yes, ma'am.
The stops, and I'm looking here. I guess it's maybe a little bit technical.
Is that the same thing I'm looking at here?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I mean, if, if one wants to stop, then how does that work?
Just put on the brakes.
Go down the pole and go down.
Only teasing.
Oh, I missed that anyway. And then it goes down, okay.
When you walk out there, when you walk up to the kiosk, you tell it where you wanna stop. Which stops, and then it lets you off, and then once you get to your stop, and it comes down. It comes down about that far above the ground. And, and, and what they've designed is some low plants in there. So when you walk, if it's on the sidewalk, you see some nice landscape area. And then that thing goes right on that top of it, and then doesn't touch, doesn't touch it, go right back up. But pretty flowers and everything else in there.
And it gets back in the?
On the forty-five, on the main route, that's right. So it, it'll, just like a train would do when, when you, when it gets, you know, the main rail, then it'd come over here to stop or to do whatever they do. So it, it comes out, and then that's where all of the getting on and getting off of it does in that stop.
Thank you.
But, but is it five and a half, no, thirteen hundred stops.
Any other questions?
I have some. Ms. Williams, thank you for the presentation, it's definitely like the Jetsons.
That, that's way, I'm eighty-five years old, so that, that's a lot younger than me.
Yeah, I think that was older than me, somewhere in the middle there. I'm certainly not an engineer at all, but my understanding of right of ways as it relates to the riding, widening of a road, or for example, putting a sidewalk in or something like that, is that we can put a sidewalk into a right of way, but then we have to acquire additional right of way to offset the right of way that we utilized. So, can you, and so that has open market costs, whether it's an eminent domain or so, help me reconcile the math, you say it doesn't cost me anything, but how do I?
I understand that this will not be subject to eminent domain, it just has to be negotiated. But if it's not, then you have to move it down a block or something like that to somebody else. But it, it's really, cause it makes it very convenient for them, cause it's, if a stop would be.
Well, no, not the convenience, I'm just talking about the legality of it, right?
Oh, okay.
So I wanna put a, I wanna, I wanna put a train right like that. Has, if, if that's, with thirteen hundred and eighty stops just in Clayton County, what has the state said about crossing the state highways?
Yeah, they, they have.
Cars going underneath that seems dangerous.
That's right. Well, well, no, trunks, anything can go underneath it.
What is, is the state ruled on that?
That's right, oh, yes.
Is that in the packet? Cause I didn't see that.
No, no, it, it's not in your packet, but GDOT has rules, regulations on that. It, it's tougher to get a, a right of way, a lot, parallel to it, but they have very good rules on crossing it, so that you get across them. But in this case, you know, the sidewalk is, is an ideal place to put this ten-foot easement, cause it could, it won't affect anything walking on that sidewalk.
Do, do, I don't know if we have our, our local legal or, or traffic engineers, but you're saying that we can use existing right of way without having to expand additional right of way?
That, that's correct, exactly. And, and.
Does y'all know that to be true? I'm looking for legal or Mr. Matarco or someone. Is that true, Mr. Matarco, from your knowledge? I gotta pull you in, cause we keep saying right of way. I mean, it seems too good to be true, that's awesome. Trying to get my head around it.
If I'm interpreting this right, you're looking at an encroachment permit for him to install basically a utility pole. We're trying to follow this a little bit. Think of him putting a pole beside the sidewalk, and the sidewalk being underneath that. So you wouldn't necessarily need any more right of way if there's no utility lines or nothing overhead to conflict with that.
But if there was a utility overhead, that would have to be relocated?
Yes, something's got to be done.
Okay, thank you for that. So Mr. Williams, can you speak to that, cause that seems pretty substantial?
That's a good question. What they've done.
Thank you, Mr. Matarco.
In, in the track above it, you see the track, the, the pods going on, that can hold utility wires. We really clean it up a lot by not having all those wires. Georgia Power has, has a, what they call a core team looking at and talking to us about that now, about how that'll work. Now, you can't put all of the wires in there, like a transmission line has to go outside of that. But they could be, and TransitX will pay for whatever the cost is to redo those utilities.
Okay, so let's take that for example. So again, I'm just a layman, but from a splopped funded road widening, take Valley Hill, Mount Zion, Woolsey Road, whatever, I look at the numbers of zeros for just a segment of road to realign utilities. And there's a lot of zeros, so those are in the millions just for those segments. So in your pro formas here, I guess it's pro formas, you're talking about a one point three billion dollar project cost?
Yes, sir.
That encompasses the cost of relocating two hundred miles of utilities throughout the county?
That's correct, exactly right. It's a lot of money.
And the pro forma debt service, hundred and nineteen million starting in the first year, you know, and, and again, I'm not an accountant, but a BDA and stuff like that. Looks like you guys got about a sixty plus percent debt service off of your gross, starting off before you even make a profit?
That's right.
And what percentage of that one point three billion goes to just relocation of utilities? Half of it?
I'm a CPA, so I, I am, that's one area, I was a private warehouse in New York out of college.
Thank you.
But, but, yeah, those are all, you know, that's why they're very transparent about it. That's the debt service that take to, to pay for that one point three billion dollars, the ten-year payments on that. And the operating costs are, are not nearly as, as much as normal, cause you don't have gas. In fact, one of the, the things, that, that, those solar pods produce a lot of energy. And that excess energy will go up into the grid and Georgia Power will pay for that excess energy. That's one of the ten of our revenues coming in.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand, so as far as we know, the state doesn't care. We could do some sort of an encroachment permit, probably, but we'd have to relocate maybe hundreds of miles of utilities, and this could accommodate that, but that's all been built into the pro forma one point three.
That's correct.
Now, the one point three, as I'm reading your thing, would be financed privately. Now, again, just dividing your own first year debt service into gross revenues. Now, being a CPA can appreciate bank ratios on mortgages, right? I'm not gonna get a mortgage without the twenty-eight, thirty-six rule, probably, right? And, but you're talking about double that, and you're quoting at five percent?
So what's that?
But that's like a double debt coverage at the same rate.
You're saying a double debt?
Yeah, I mean, hundred and nineteen million dollars annual debt service, starting in year one of operations off of a two hundred and seventy-four gross revenues on your sheet?
Yes. But you want, that's ten years, so ten times that will be the, the.
I just wonder how it's gonna pay for itself.
One three plus interest.
Okay, well, why don't we do this in the interest of time? Why don't you make an appointment for any commissioner who wants some additional information?
Let me just ask this, one thing.
Quick question.
What if, okay, you say Henry County has agreed. What if Clayton? Okay, what if Clayton said no? How would Henry get around, how would they get to say the airport or downtown?
It would certainly be bad for everybody, in my opinion. But you could, you could go up to DeKalb and around.
I was just wondering if you have to get the right of ways and all that.
The city of Atlanta and come back you down.
What's the pro forma, what's the debt, what's your proposed budget cost, project cost down? That's another one point three down there on top of our one point three billion?
Which one now?
He wants to know how much it'd be for Henry County's.
Henry County's one point four billion.
Okay.
About the same, but a little higher.
All right, Mr. Williams, thank you for your presentation, and please, reach out to the commissioners and see if they have any additional questions for you.
I'd be glad to meet y'all anytime, be glad to do that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the board would now consider the consent agenda with the exclusion of item O.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I do, do, do we, do we vote to exclude item O? I know we just said.
We voted to consider it separately. No, it was a four-one vote to consider it separately.
Did you take it off or it's separate?
I thought we took it off.
I thought I took it off too.
Okay, my bad, I wrote it down wrong.
Yeah, I think we took it off.
Just take it off.
All right, okay.
All right. Those are favor I. I oppose, it's unanimous.
The board would now consider the request of the Director of Human Resources, Pamela Ambles.
Human Resources.
Hold on a second, Ms. Ambles. Does any board member have a problem for taking her two together or three?
Um, mainly two, I would like to take it separately, just because I've already made my statement, I just wanna take my vote.
Okay, let's do one and three together and then do number two separately.
We wanna do number two separately, Chairman?
We could do one separate and two and three separate, do it that way.
Okay, let's take them all separate.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Two and three could have went together, I'm still.
Human Resources is requesting to renew our Medicare Advantage policy with Aetna for the coverage period of July first, January first, two thousand nineteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. We're also requesting to extend our contract with Kaiser for our senior advantage coverage for seven months, for seven months. Both of these products are Medicare products that are offered to our retirees aged sixty-five and older. In early two thousand nineteen, Human Resources would present a strategy to the board in regards to the way we currently administer our retiree benefits. In the meantime, approval of this request will align both products within the same renewal period, which prepares us for our two thousand nineteen strategy, as well as allow us to continue to offer these benefits to our retirees. The total annual premium for Aetna renewal is one million, five hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars, which is actually a decrease of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. The cost to extend Kaiser's contract for seven months is seven hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. There is no additional cost regarding this request. Funds have been allocated in Human Resources two thousand nineteen budget.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I have one. So why, why the seven-month deal with Kaiser?
Yes, ma'am. Our renewal period with Kaiser is June one to, to May thirty-first. I'm not sure why, exactly why that particular renewal period was in place. But it not only covers the medical portion, it also covers the senior advantage piece. So we had one Medicare product where the renewal period began June first to May thirty-first, and then the other Medicare product from January one to December thirty-one. So the seven-month extension would put both of those Medicare products right there together. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Those are favor I.
Aye.
I oppose, it's unanimous.
Resolution two thousand eighteen dash one oh seven, transfer the scope of work of a zoning administrator to community development director. Subsequently, Human Resources is requesting to transfer the following positions from the Office of Plant Planning, Zoning and Sustainability to Community Development. Administrative Assistant, Planning Specialist Senior, Senior Zoning Code Enforcement Officer, Planning and Zoning Technician, Development and Resource, Research Analyst, Planning and Zoning Administrator. These are full-time civil service protected positions. Human Resources is also requesting to transfer the green communities intern. This is a grant-funded position. These are budgeted positions and there is no cost, additional cost to the county.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Here and none, those are favor I.
Aye.
Oppose, 4-1 it passes.
The last one we have is at the October 16, 2018 board meeting. The board voted to transfer duties and responsibilities of the zoning administrator to the Director of Community Development. As a result of the decrease in the scope, duties, and responsibilities of this classification, Human Resources is requesting to reclassify the position from grade 35, which is a total compensation of $110,443, to grade 33, total compensation $100,729. If approved, this request results in a savings of $9,714 for the county.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All right, here and none, those are favor I.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
4-1 it passes.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Attorney Chuck Reed, Legal Department.
Take item 12 separate, please.
We have one item that, resolution 2018-110, do you want me to start with that one? Do you want me to start with the 111?
110.
110 is from the consent agenda that was moved over.
Oh, I thought we took it off.
Oh, did they take it off altogether? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so, um...
So I want you to take 10 and 11 together and take 12 separate.
Okay. Ordinance 28 team, 111 is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia's amended specifically, Chapter 50, Health and Sanitation, Article 1 in general, 50-2, Board of Health Regulations subsection B-1, concerning onsite sewage management systems, rules and regulations, and substitute in lieu thereof, a new subsection B-1, to reflect the current Clayton County Board of Health regulations, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide severability, to provide an effective date for other purposes. Also have resolution 2018-113 is a resolution to initiate various text amendments to the zoning ordinance and to modify the zoning map accordingly to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on either item? Here and none, those are favor I.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous.
Resolution 2018-114, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to convey certain real property to the Development Authority of Clayton County, to authorize the chairman to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And I'd like to make a note that I provided an amended Exhibit A that removes certain property that had already been, or is in the process of being conveyed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Got one question. So basically, we're taking this, the properties listed and moving it under the Development Authority, correct?
That's correct.
So they're property that's, tracks of land that's owned by the county currently?
That's correct, property that's currently owned by the county.
I have a question. If we're going to give the property to the Development Authority, under the purview of Development Authority, we've also allocated funds from the Tourism Authority over to the Development Authority. What's in place to ensure that the citizens of Clayton County are going to get a fair and equitable return on their investment? Or, I'm going to call it an investment with the current status of that board. But, um, what are, what are our sureties? We've given them everything. What's the return? What do we get back? What can I go back and tell my citizens, or our citizens, that they're receiving back for conveying property to folks? And then, what do we get back?
I'll try to answer that.
I didn't ask you, sir. Can you please answer? Thank you.
Commissioner, the, the general purpose of, of conveyance of real property from the county to a development authority is that, that, that the development authority has the ability to utilize that property in a manner that is far broader than the county has. The only way that the county can, can dispose of or sell property to a non-governmental entity is to declare that property surplus and sell it to, at an auction or in some public manner. Where a development authority, any development authority authorized by the state, by state law, has the ability to enter into agreements with, with private developers, public-private partnerships, they have a much broader ability. That's normally the reason for these types of conveyances.
And I understand that.
And I don't know that I can answer your question.
Well...
Because it goes to, I mean, what, I think the answer to your question would be, what am I going to go, what am I going to tell my constituents? Would be, uh, hopefully, you would tell your constituents, by, by conveying this property to the entity that has the ability to do more with it than the Board of Commissioners does, then we are putting it in the hands of a planning agency whose purpose is to enhance and promote economic development within the county and who has a, who has a, an ability to do that that is greater than legally. Not, not, when I say ability, I'm talking about a legal ability, without commenting on, you know, the, the other aspects of it, that is greater than the county.
Okay, that didn't answer my question, no offense.
Let me try again.
No, it's okay.
No, you ask it again and I'll try again, okay?
Because honestly, I don't mean to be rude, but I, I came back for this meeting today. This is the thing, when I spoke with Fulton County, when I speak to other counties, it's clearly defined what's the return back to their county, clearly defined. The challenge I have with our relationship with this Development Authority and the way we are set up, number one, there's no true oversight on what's being done, and I know it needs to be a separate board, and I get that. But it's clearly defined in other jurisdictions. And what I find here is we are giving, 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 and I don't see the clear definition of anything on paper, what we going to get back. It is clearly defined what they want to see happen with the land, how they want to see that land used. And right now, with the setup of our Development Authority, I do not have the confidence, as an elected official, that I could tell my people that as we give our county property away, that we're going to receive a true return on that.
All right.
And that's my statement, and that's it.
Any other questions?
No, sir, for me.
All right, here and none, those are favor I.
Aye.
Nay.
It's 4-1 it passes.
Due to the executive session, Mr. Chairman, for real estate and litigation.
Real estate and litigation.
Mr. Chairman, we have one board appointment.
Okay. We have an appointment to the Development Authority, Redevelopment Authority Board and Urban Redevelopment Agency to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Ricky Clark Jr. The term expires March 1st, 2019. For board appointment, are there any recommendations?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to appoint Mr. Wayne Clark.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those are favor I.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
3-2 it passes.
Mr. Chairman, if there is no further...
No. No, 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 sir. We're not going to have any outbursts. All right, at this time, I'll take a motion to go on the executive session for real estate and litigation.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those are favor I.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous, thank you. Okay, a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
A second, those are favor I.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous. Mr. Handcock.
Mr. Chairman, the real estate matters are, at the last meeting, the board approved a lease agreement between Brothers Properties Phoenix LLC and the county for suite number 350 at 1895 Phoenix Boulevard. And when that lease went to the landlord, they realized that they had failed to remove a renewal term that was in it. That, that renewal term did not appear in the original. This is the middle of three leases for space up there. And so they are asking that, that board authorize the modification of the lease agreement for that space to remove the renewal term and authorize you to execute that. And the second item is a new lease agreement for additional space, also for the Health Department, at the same location. It is suite 355, it's approximately 5,096 square feet, for 12-month term. $16 per square foot is the rent, annual rental of $81,536. The, the terms of the, of the lease agreement are the same as the other two that you, that you, excuse me, of the last one that you executed, with the exception of the square footage.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? Here and none, those are favor I.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous, I thank you.
Would you like me to take them both?
Yes.
All right, the first is a settlement agreement between the county and Geraldine Williams relating to an accident on or about May 18th, 2017, at or near the intersection of Thrillco Road and Mount Zion Road and Incorporated Jonesboro, Clayton County, Georgia, in the amount of $150,000. The second is another serious accident involving Heidi Stover that occurred on or about August 31st, 2015, at the intersection of Terror Boulevard and Mount Zion Boulevard and Incorporated Clayton County, Georgia, in the amount of $250,000. Both of these requesting that the board would approve them and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget when necessary to reflect appropriate revenue source and expense.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here and none, those are favor I.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous.
Thank you.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. And speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening. And continuing to talk about and discuss crime and criminal activity in all of Clayton County, I will start with the six major crime category, which is robberies. Robberies defined as the taking or trying to take money, goods, possessions, or property from someone that has value by utilizing intimidation, force, or threat. Robberies are crime of theft and can be classified as larceny, stealing by force or by threat of force. Last year, 2017, in unincorporated Clayton County, which is under the jurisdiction and control of the Clayton County Police Department, there were 506 reported cases of robberies, compared to 603 reported cases in 2015 and 550 reported cases in 2015. Last year, 2017, in all of Clayton County, including unincorporated Clayton County, there were a grand total of 712 reported cases of robberies, compared to 888 reported cases in 2016 and 707 reported cases in 2015. Analysis to date, last year, 2017, the number of reported cases of robberies in unincorporated Clayton County decreased by 97 from 2016 and decreased by 44 when compared to 2015. In the first seven-month time period from January to July of this year, 2018, the Clayton County Police Department, under the leadership authority commanded by Chief of Police Kevin Roberts, who has committed to reducing crime and criminal activity in unincorporated Clayton County, has already seen a decrease of 16.7%, with 230 incidents of robberies committed, down by 51 from 276 in the same seven-month time period last year, 2017. Last year, 2017, the number of reported cases of robberies in all of Clayton County decreased by 176 from 2016, but increased by five when compared to 2015. The commentary, it is my sincere hope that the police departments in Clayton County, seven cities, will continue to work just as hard as our own Clayton County Police Department are working and continuing to decrease the robbery rate in all of Clayton County, which showed a substantial decrease in 2017 when compared to 2016, because as all of you know, one of the main determinants of whether or not Clayton County is a safe county is its robbery rate, which is on the decrease, but can be driven up by the numerous criminally-minded people with their undesirable, unlawful, disrespecting attitudes and their crime-comitting criminal actions, behavior, and conduct, who have relocated to Clayton County to live with our glut of apartment homes, mobile home parks, extended state hotels and motels, et cetera, and who live alongside and with the law-abiding, respectful, hard-working, honest, decent, and tax-paying citizens of Clayton County, and others who have also relocated to Clayton County to live, work, and enjoy all of the good things that Clayton County has to offer. I will continue to give the crime statistical information, empirical data, and numbers on all of the eight major crime categories for unincorporated Clayton County, as well as all of Clayton County, in the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting. Good day.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Chairman, Commissioner, Commissioner Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County. I am very deeply, deeply concerned about the corruption that is going on at the Development Authority. Now, I have to be very, very careful as I expound upon this endeavor. Commissioner Hambrick, I have gone to every Development Authority meeting, you have never been present. So I don't know where you're getting your information from. I don't know why Mr. Ricky Clark was taken off their board, who has a skill set and is a volunteer to help move this county forward in economic growth and development. I received a very, very significant phone call today, Chairman.
Call him out.
That... I'm very concerned about my safety, but I'm not concerned at all. The Development Authority has been corrupt by Mr. Wade Starr. I have to be concerned about slander issues, liability issues. That board has been corrupt by Mr. Wade Starr. And I have witnesses that's ready to testify to that fact. So with that stated, hopefully, the Clayton County Police Department will correspond with the JAR Bureau of Investigation. Hopefully, the GBI will get to the bottom of this corruption. There's clear evidence that two commissioners, in fact, conspired with him for years. And with that stated, I don't know what the powers would be that you have as the Chairman, but there has to be a cease and desist order. We will be meeting with attorneys on tomorrow. and you will be notified on the evidence at hand to stop this corruption. It is pathetic and it's embarrassing. As a concerned citizen, I'm embarrassed to even report this to the Board of Commissioners. But we are moving forward and let the chips fall where they may. Thank you.
Mickey Garber.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Two issues I want to speak on at this time. And I'm sorry that two of the commissioners are absent, but I'll speak on them anyway. One is the perception of this county. And the perception is true. It's, it's littered. It's trashy. I have brought to the commission that education was the way to clean up the trash. Ms. Gregory, you gave a Halloween party for all the children in the Rex community. I applaud you for that. But you should have handed out to them in the candy wrappers or with the wrappers that those wrappers were to go in the trash can because I'm picking them up on Highway 42. From the trashiness of the county, I want to proceed to the Development Authority. I understand clearly that the Development Authority has ways of, of doing business that the county commissioners can't undertake. I understand that clearly. And with that mechanism, using my county tax, our county taxpaying dollars, that they're able to do that business. However, when that business is conducted, the people of the county are, deserve and should have compensation for that money going out to them. I see the same thing that Mr. Jefferson sees is corruption within that board. Thank you.
Looks like Nunnally Simmons. Nunnally? All right. Well, that concludes public comment. Unless there's any other business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? I'll second the motion, those are favor I. I oppose. It's unanimous.